I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Need a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Aaron's. Any public input on the agenda this morning? All right, if not, we call the questions, Sherri.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes, and then we'll move on to our consent agenda. It's our motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Moving on to regular business, county assistance request. Good morning.
That would be me. Good morning, Commissioners. This shouldn't take too long. Got a request for a poor relief hospital claim or for two hospital admissions for the same person. Both of them are relatively small in consideration of what hospital bills cost nowadays. And the amount requested is what we call the DRG or Medicaid rate, which is the lowest of the two rates that the county pays. This person has been to us before but hasn't met assistance eligibility before because of past employment. Things have changed. Person has a very major disease or illness, I should say, and so as things have changed, and so this person is no longer employed, has applied for disability. There is a slight possibility, however slight, that the person may be approved for Social Security disability, and along with that, also a slight possibility that we might give reimbursement by Medicaid. I don't anticipate that happening because if you know how Social Security works, they go by past employment. Person's been working up to a certain point and has paid in, so they're more likely to get what's called SSDI versus SSI, and SSI comes with Medicaid, SSDI does not. At any rate, right now, this person, the person's employed, his wife is employed, and so that's the sole income for the family. Been in Lincoln County for some time now, so a resident, and did not have, his wife does not have insurance available. They don't qualify at, at least at this time, under the Affordable Care Act, the marketplace, don't qualify for Medicare, Medicaid, not a veteran, don't have access to regular insurance, not a tribal member. So when we ran the figures, or the person that ran the figures, it came out this time that did qualify for assistance. So we're looking at two hospital admissions back last summer, one in July and one in September, with the total county cost due from Lincoln County, if you were to approve, three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents at the Medicaid rate, and the total bill charge is a little over twenty-six thousand, so it's quite a bit less than what the bill is. And the hospital accepts that as full payment. Of course, there would be a lien on these folks for that three thousand and some dollars, but that's essentially the case without going into further details. Questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Move for approval.
Any public input on this agenda item? All right, Commissioner Schmidt, motion for approval. Is there a second? Thank you, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sherri, we call for more.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Next item on our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I brought the job description for the commissioned administrative officer and have asked for you to approve and authorize Human Resources to publish that position with four weeks, with the posting remaining open until the candidate is chosen.
Was there any change in the job description since we first received this?
When we first brought it to the commission a few weeks ago, yes, there was updates and modifications.
What were they again?
So primarily in the essential functions, we added a line about strategic planning, long-term budgetary goals and budget planning, and then took the notes on the legislative line and made it more focused on just keeping an eye on the trends that would affect the county rather than any kind of specific lobbying.
Anybody have any other questions for staff? If not, is there public input on this agenda item?
Good morning. Mark Nordsee, 7900 South Pinewood. I just have a couple comments. Tracy's done a remarkable job in updating this and getting this a little bit more in line with what the fan was thinking. I have shared this with the fan group, and the comments that they had were that this is getting better and getting close, so that's really great news. They are also very willing to engage in the interview process should that happen. I have two comments that I wanted to share with you on this particular version, and that is, first of all, when we talked about this at Fan, we thought this was a zero-sum position. So we want to make it very clear that we believe this position should be self-funding. They should be out raising money through grant requests or through finding savings through the county operations to fund their position, their staff, their perks, their everything. So whether you include it in the job description or you include it in their job evaluation form, whatever, but that's something that we really believe strongly, that this position can do that and can actually affect your costs, so that's important to us. The other one is, under other requirements, in the very last part of the thing, says this position is not required to drive or operate a motor vehicle. Well...
I saw that, too. I think they're gonna have to drive.
Unless you're gonna chauffe them around in the sheriff's car or give them an Uber, I don't know what, but I would think you'd want them to be, require them to be able to drive and visit other counties or other things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item?
All right, I'm looking at that as well, and I noticed that kind of as a, I was paying more attention to the other parts of that. I think the position is going to be required to drive or operate a motor vehicle. However, I don't believe they're gonna have to restrain or apprehend individuals, so if we can edit that.
Certainly.
Any other thoughts from Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Well, I certainly appreciate the enthusiasm and the input from the Fan Committee. I'm only express my own personal feeling. This position is to assist Commissioners in their day-to-day operation to try to manage the county in the best possible way. So if you're, if you're gonna make an individual try to be revenue-neutral and they have other responsibilities, I just question that because we all talk about grants. Everybody's gonna get a grant or grant. No one has a list of grants to apply for that can cover what that person does. So let's get real here and put, and put some reality into this thing. So consequently, I think, from my own personal thing, is I have specific things that I want this individual to kind of work on as far as to deliver the, about information that we need, whether it's on planning and zoning, whether it's on roads, whether it's on issues of personnel, so that we're better able to ask that individuals to respond and to do the research necessary. So consequently, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put a weight around their neck and saying, well, on the other hand, if you're gonna have this position and you're gonna have to pay for it yourself and your staff, how many people you think are gonna apply for that? Not very many, not very many, because I don't know that there's that many people that want out there. And if that person does agree, do they have the qualifications to match the, on the things that we want done? Because the whole idea, and I'll give Commissioner Poppins an attaboy on this one. For a long time, he has advocated for this so that we could help. We're the third-largest county, we're one of the few counties in our state that does not have an administrative assistant. And I look to our neighbors in the north and I realize that they have a huge population, but on the other hand, they've got four people in their office serving their Commissioners, working with them, working on budgets, working on certain things. So before I cast my own personal vote on this thing, I want to make sure that we are realistic in the expectations that we have, and I do not favor that they have to pay for their own way because I don't think that's possible.
Any other input from the Commission?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Commenting on the operating vehicle, although it seems practical that a person would be driving a car, if we place a language in there that they must be able to, that would eliminate people with some disabilities that may not be able to operate a vehicle, there are means for people to get around without operating their own vehicle. So I would not be in favor of listing that they have to operate a vehicle. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you wanna just take it out completely?
I refer to, or defer to the HR what would be appropriate. I do not want to minimize the opportunity for anybody that can apply for this job.
Yeah, if we're able to.
Yeah, let's just take it out completely.
Absolutely.
With that removed, Madam Chair, I would offer a motion to approve and advertise for the position.
All right, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Sherri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to the next item on our agenda. John, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is just a quick update to our fee structure for the rental of the Four H Grounds. Now that the horse arena is done, we've been getting lots of requests for private people wanting to utilize the horse arena, so it kind of drove us to upgrade that part of it, and then we just tweaked a few other policies and fee structures on lessons learned over the last couple years.
Anybody have any questions for staff? All right, any public input? All right, if not, is there a motion?
I would so move, Madam Chair, to approve the changes to our fee structure.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Terri.
Good morning. I've got a couple items here. First one is permission to go to bid for the 2023 surface treatment project, which is our reseal project. It's gonna roughly cover about thirty miles of road and then the pavement out of the shop, so.
So moved, Madam Chair, and permission to bid, for published.
I'm gonna ask for public comment first.
Excuse me, I keep forgetting. You're so good at this.
I'm trying. That's because I wrote a note.
You're on point today.
Said use public comment. Okay. Is there any public comment on this one? No. Okay, I have a motion from Schmidt to approve. Is there another motion? There's like, thank you. I've got a motion and a second for Commissioner Aaron's then. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Next item I have is permission to go to bid for the 2023 surfacing project. This is gonna be the County Road 152 project, which will be doing milling, FDR stabilization, and a mat on top, so.
All right. Anybody have any questions for staff? All right, any public input on this item? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Aaron's and a second from Commissioner Gibbon. Sherri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's, is your microphone on? Because I'm not hearing any of these motions from you. Missed them all. Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item.
Madam Chair, if you're staying in order, I'm gonna step away from my.
Okay, that's fine. Who's got number six? Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As you realize, carbon pipelines have been in the news and very much in the forefront for the last couple years. We have a number of meetings that have taken place over the last eighteen months, which I know many of us have attended. As you realize, I've been approached by several different individuals in my community, in my district, asking, is Lincoln County taking a position on these pipelines? Most of the time, my response is, I think it's very good that right now our pipelines are regulated by our PUC. At one time, carbon pipelines were not. And I think particularly, we know that down the road, there will be a decision made. Many people in the area that have contacted me simply are very much concerned, still yet, about safety. They're still very much concerned about the fact that these pipelines that put on their property allows them no type of liability insurance if something should happen. There are concerns, others of things as well as what responsibility they have versus the pipeline companies. And I think we know that there are some individuals that do favor it. There are some that probably are reaching out to me, or the ones that are not in favor of it. I respect both their points of view. However, I do think that we have to look at this eminent domain very closely. Eminent domain for private gain and private companies is a real concern. I know that without eminent domain, government use, we probably wouldn't have railroads or airports or dams in our Missouri River, but at the same time, I don't know if this is the right thing for the fastest-growing county in South Dakota that we possibly may have two pipelines of carbon crisscrossing our particular county. So my hopeful motion would be that, again, we support properly the owners' rights under South Dakota law, Summit, or excuse me, carbon pipeline companies and so forth, respect property owners and that they work with negotiations and so on and so forth to you, to avoid the use of eminent domain. So that is my, I know this is discussion and board action. I guess I would like to hear some other discussion before a motion.
Well, I appreciate the discussion, Commissioner. I'm just not sure this is something that requires board action. I mean, I think certainly as Commissioners, we all support property owner rights in general, but there are gonna be situations where we might have to look at using eminent domain for, when we don't have other options that are viable for the county. So I'm not sure what broad message we want to send, and we don't have any authority over this, over these pipelines at this point. So I don't know that board action is necessary today, but your comments are certainly appreciated. Other thoughts?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
As I, as I read this and listened to Commissioner Gibbon, I think this is a resolution that pretty well isolates what we're trying to say, is that we're encouraging two pipeline companies not to use eminent domain. That's all. It's a rather passive one. We're not certainly excluding the use that eminent domain may be necessary for public activity. I think Commissioner Gibbon said it well, for railroads and dams and bridges and buildings and everything else. That's not, at least from my vantage point, Commissioner, that's not what I'm hearing you say. I'm just hearing you say you want a resolution on record that says you encourage these pipelines not to utilize eminent domain.
Correct.
And has there been a resolution prepared? I don't have one in my share file, if that's what we're asking for.
We would use the language that's presented? Okay, thank you. The Lincoln County Commission supports property owner, that, right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I've got a motion, and do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Is there any public input on this item?
I wasn't gonna speak. Betty Otten, 46787273rd Street. I know that Commissioner Poppins stepped out to recuse himself. I was just wondering if any of the others should be recused. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess just as a general, just topic here, this isn't something that's under our purview. I don't wanna, you know, I think it's situational, whether we're for or against the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. I'm not sure why each, we're asking, we're being asked to make a broad decision and somehow, I don't know, this is just something I haven't seen on our agenda before, presented as such. I don't know. Thoughts, Commissioner Aaron's?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'd point a couple different things out. First of all, just administratively, I don't think there's anything wrong with a county commission passing a resolution for or against anything. So I don't have any concerns with regard to the, excuse me, the structure of the procedure here. Now with regard to the substance of the resolution here, I've got some mixed thoughts. So number one, our county commission has taken a position as an intervenor in front of the Public Utilities Commission. I voted against that, but that was voted on, and so we do have intervenor status right now as a county in front of the Public Utilities Commission over their ongoing process regarding the Summit Carbon Pipeline. And other county commissions have taken that intervenor status as well. How that affects this resolution or not, I don't know. Number two, with regard to this resolution, it says the county commission supports property owners' rights under South Dakota law. I can get behind that. I support that. And then the second thing that the resolution calls for is for Summit Carbon and Navigator to resolve negotiations with the property owners in order to avoid the use of eminent domain. I can support that. I mean, I think everybody supports the use of mutually agreeable resolutions as opposed to eminent domain. What I do want to point out is that, I think, last week or two weeks ago, the South Dakota House of Representatives voted forty to twenty-eight to exempt carbon pipelines from being able to have common carrier status, which means that they would not be able to use eminent domain moving forward. The sponsor of that resolution is, or the sponsor of that law is from here in Lincoln County, and then I think there's one other prime sponsor is, that's Representative Carla Limms. And then another sponsor, Representative L Word, is from Harrisburg. So we have two Lincoln County State Representatives who have supported a bill that's halfway to becoming a law. And so there is broad support in the legislature for wanting to take away the ability of carbon pipelines to use eminent domain. I think we'd be willfully ignorant if we didn't at least acknowledge that, and that's going on. I think the other issue is here, there's no doubt that there's a number of Lincoln County residents who, who are concerned about this issue. Now, I've said in the past, just, the pipeline is good for the ethanol industry. It makes ethanol more competitive, and that helps South Dakota corn farmers. Now, whether or not carbon pipeline should be allowed to have the authority to use eminent domain, that's a whole nother issue. So, and whether or not the pipeline needs to be four feet deep or six feet deep or fifty feet away from somebody's house or five hundred feet away, those are all other issues that have to be resolved yet. But I appreciate Commissioner Gibbon bringing this forward. I think it's a pretty no-nonsense resolution. I don't think that our support for this resolution today could be construed as being for or against the pipeline. So, and I'm just saying, out in the public, I support the pipeline. I think it makes corn farmers more competitive. It doesn't necessarily mean I agree with the four-foot cover, fifty feet away from somebody's house, those types of things, but given, given where I'm at, I have no problem supporting today's resolution.
All right, thank you for that, Commissioner Aaron's. With that, just with the wording exactly as it is in our agenda, that is your motion, Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Gibbon?
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Then, if there's no further discussion, Sherri, we call the roll.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I would just like to make a comment by, with the, if anyone else should be excused. I'm assuming the other James Gibbon probably has the pipeline going through, so, so I wanted to make sure that that's clear. There is another James Gibbon, so.
Okay.
All right.
Fair enough. All right. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. All right, moving on. Item seven on our agenda. Commissioner Schmidt, that's yours?
Yes. I'll read the resolution. I put, the Lincoln County Commission hereby express support and thanks for the legislation presented by Representative Ernie Otten of District Six to increase funds to counties for maintenance of infrastructure and county services. I would, I hoped that we would have had this passed prior to the two times that Representative Otten's legislative motion would have been brought before in the House and in the Senate. And, you know, these are not popular things to present to your colleagues anytime, but I, I respect his dedication and tenacity to continually bring forward the need for counties to support or have additional revenue to support capital expenditures. I think that a lot of people totally misunderstand what this resolu, or what his legislation was. It wasn't just to put, supplement your budget. It was meant for us, like when we have to spend money for these new courtrooms, we would have some additional revenue. It's not gonna pay for all of it, but it's a safeguard. You know, we, the commission, has to set that, how much we would want to expend. Is it a quarter of a penny, a half penny, or whatever, but we can only go to a half cent. It sunsets, so whenever you say how much money you intend to raise and you raise it, the tax goes away. You have to wait a period of five years before you can bring this thing back. And, you know, and the other caveat is this, you present this to the voters, and they have to pass it at sixty percent. So if the voters say, hey, fine, we'll pass this thing, yeah, it's a good idea, well, then that's their choice. We're not imposing anything. The commission is merely setting the tone. So I want a resolution acknowledging his continued support because perhaps we'll have this back again next year, or the year after, or who knows, they might try to smoke this thing out at the last possible day. Who knows all this? So I just, that's a resolution. It does, it's acknowledging, I think, the support that we have. So I would ask for a do-pass on this.
Thank you. Is there any public input on this item?
Good morning again. Mark Nordsee, 7900 South Pinewood. I was going to do this during public I was going to do this during public input, but I guess this is probably a more appropriate time. I'd also like to thank the commissioners who played a role in this. We had Commissioner Gibbon, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Landine there in person and testified. I think your comments were very salient and relevant to what was going on and whether other commissioners played a role in behind the scenes. Thank you for that, too. I mean, it's just a very important step in the process. I was heartened it got passed out of the Senate Committee. I was disheartened when it didn't pass the Senate, but it will come back. But I, in the time since this has happened, I've talked to a number of legislators to find out why. What is the issue? It seems like a no-brainer, as Commissioner Schmidt articulated. Well, first of all, I heard from several legislators that they were expecting to see some sort of county consolidation proposal tied to this, which I found kind of odd, but they thought, you know, counties could be more efficient, there should be less counties. Which got me to think is, so we consolidate counties. We don't have any fewer roads, we don't have any less crime. Consolidations just may have some merit, but it's, you don't tie it to this particular vehicle. It doesn't make any sense. Another legislator said they expected offsets, that if you're going to raise the sales tax, we should reduce property taxes. Well, we have property taxes to pay all of our current bills. And this is not a new tax. Well, that was the other thing, is this is a new tax. No, it's not. It's just a way of collecting money. We're going to collect the money anyway. So there's just a lot of misconceptions. And then there's fear among the legislatures that this is a start of something new, that, okay, today it's just the few things that Ernie Otten said it was going to be, but tomorrow it's going to be swimming pools and whatever else. So there'll be no end to the sales tax, which kind of led to the whole idea of trust in county government. I do think we are the odd stepchild in this equation, but so as we plan for next year with your new county administration position, we should probably take some of these things into consideration and really drive home the point that this is an important thing to the county, and it's totally optional. I mean, the citizens have to vote for this. And lastly, there's some unintended consequences that I just thought about, is we thought about this as Lincoln County, as it applies to us. Well, what about a assessment-rich, commercially-rich county to the north of us that all of a sudden decides they should have a sales tax, too? And it's like, well, I'm not so keen on them having a sales tax as I am us having one. So anyway, thank you again for working through the process. We'll get better at it, and we'll try again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input on that item?
Madam Chair. So I've talked to Mark about this. I've also talked to a number of legislators about this, and I testified in front of the Summer Committee as well this last summer regarding this issue. And Mark brought up a salient point just now. And what he said was, we're going to do it anyway. It's not a new tax because we're going to do it anyway. In my talking with a number of legislators, that is the rub, right there. Because a number of legislators don't feel that we're going to do it anyway, and they do feel it's a new tax. I understand that the proponents this time around tried saying, well, it's just a different collection mechanism. Well, that's a half-truth. The full truth is, if the sales tax did go into effect, we'd be collecting sales tax, number one. And then, number two, we'd still be collecting property taxes. So I would still be paying my property taxes to the county. And then when I went to the grocery, or excuse me, to not the grocery store, but I went to some kind of retail establishment, I would also pay the sales tax. So I would be paying two taxes now, not just one. And I think the legislators were rubbed the wrong way when they were told that this is not a new tax, because they're saying, hold on. I'd be paying both taxes. And I think that's the rub right there, because they're saying, look, I got to continue to pay property taxes, but I got to also pay the sales tax. Now, with that said, it's a more efficient way to pay down infrastructure cost through sales tax. Lincoln County, every month, collects, this according to the Department of Revenue, forty million dollars in sales tax. That's not our county, though. That's the state and the municipalities within it, excuse me, that generate forty million dollars. A half-penny sales tax on forty million dollars of economic activity is, if you exempted out grocery taxes, is somewhere around two-point-four to two-point-five million dollars that would be collected, right? So if you collected two-and-a-half million dollars through that half-penny sales tax, we could much more efficiently pay down, for example, a fifty-million-dollar building. So right now, if we want to purchase a fifty-million-dollar building, we have to do it through general obligation bonds is one way to do it. So you not only pay the principal, but you pay the interest on top of that principal for up to twenty years. It's like a mortgage, right? You got to pay the principal, and you got to pay the interest. It's much more advantageous to county taxpayers if they're going to purchase infrastructure to pay it off faster, because then you don't have as much carrying cost through interest. And so I think that's where the legislature is being short-sighted, because that's where proponents of the measure, like Mark, come in and say, hey, look, the county is going to go ahead and pass this opt-out anyway. Why do you want it to be so darn expensive? So the bankers and the bond dealers out there are jumping for joy when no action is take, no action occurs here, because they're the big winners. They win because all of our hard-earned county property taxpayer money goes to pay bankers and bond dealers instead of being driven towards paying off the principal. And you could pay down a fifty-million-dollar facility in thirty-six to forty-five months under this proposal. So it's a more efficient and effective way to pay down infrastructure costs through collection of sales taxes opposed to through general obligation bonds. Those general obligation bonds are going to add another thirty-five to forty percent in interest cost over the lifetime of the bill, or of the bond. So from that point of view, the sales tax is much more efficient to taxpayers. Now, with that said, it's very clear, it's abundantly clear, our legislature does not want to reorganize the tax structure in this state to allow for this to happen. Got through the House last year, failed this year, failed in the Senate last year, failed in the Senate this year. It's not going anywhere, and apparently the governor doesn't support it either. So I think the proponents of this measure are going to need to come to the table and support what some of the opponents want, which is county consolidation. You know, the colleges in this state fought forever having to consolidate their services, and they gave all the same excuses, I don't see what the benefits are. Then they did it, you know, because like right now, they've consolidated some registrar services and auditor service, some of those things. They did it, now it works just fine.
All right, I'm going to stop commenting at that point. This is about a resolution expressing support and thanks for what Ernie Otten did up in peer here over the last session. So if there's no other comment on what's actually, what's on the agenda, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on that.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, will you call the roll, please?
Did you have public input?
Oh, I did not. Well, I did. I did have public input.
Oh, sorry.
By golly.
Lost my hand.
Yeah, we've been talking about this that long, we've all forgotten.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yep.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item. Sheri, that's you.
Yep. So there's a new national opioid settlement that has been reached with Tiva, Allegra, CSB, Walgreens, and Walmart. And I just want authorization to go ahead and complete the grant paperwork for the new settlement. I did talk to the attorney general, and he said, yes, this is the same as the other one. It's a new settlement, so he supports us approving it.
All right, heard the request. Is there any public discussion on this item? If not, consider a motion.
I'll so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sheri, we call the roll?
One question, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Honor, how long does it take for us, if we apply to maybe get these funds? Is there any timeline?
The last one, I think it was within six months.
All right, thank you.
So the settlement's been done, it's just getting everybody together to get it, so. Commissioner Ehrens, or did we have public comment on it?
You have?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are the restrictions, excuse me, my mic's off. Are the restrictions on how the funds can be utilized similar or identical to the first settlement? Do you know?
I have not seen the restrictions on it yet, but I would imagine that they're going to be similar.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Sheri, call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. You've got the next item as well, Sheri?
Yep. So right now, on our public records request, we charge per line on the spreadsheets that we send out, the certified assessor file and the current payable tax list. If we were to charge them per line of the information that they receive with the new system, it would be close to four thousand dollars. What I want to do is, I want to update the resolution number that set the fees for the public records, nineteen-eleven dash sixteen. And for these two specific files, make it a total of two thousand dollars. Instead of having them pay for the additional information that our system now allows, just make it a flat amount.
All right, anybody have any questions for staff? Is there any public input on this item? All right, if not, consider a motion?
So move, Madam Chair. The auditor's request to two thousand dollars per line.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, if not, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Any commissioner reports today?
You want to do public comment first?
Actually, yeah, public comment first. Any public comment? All right, any commissioner reports?
Madam Chair, I would just like to give a brief report. Last, or this week, I was in Washington, DC for the National Association of County Officials, had their legislative conference, and the Board of Directors had a meeting. This is something that I would encourage each commissioner to attend one of these. I think we've put money aside. I think the only commissioner besides, and I'm on a board, so that really doesn't make, but our commissioner, who was it that attended? Gillespie, went to two of these. And I hope he had some, learned something on there. But I would encourage them to attend, because there's a wealth of information. And I'll just tell you this, we covered, we had Secretary Bilsec came and spoke to the board about the pending farm bill and how comprehensive the farm bill is. And I'm going to have some data and statistics to hand out, because it's very interesting. The vast majority, I think it's almost sixty percent of the money that goes into a farm bill is spent on nutrition. And all your rest of your things, your that are going out for rural development, that goes out for grants, that goes out for various subsidies, public lands. Pilts is something we don't have, but it's very important to Western that have large amounts of government land payment in lieu of taxes. Anyway, there's a tremendous amount in the farm bill. We heard from Secretary Budicek about the infrastructure bill and what that ultimately means for counties and monies that are available long-term for roads and bridges and doing the necessary things to keep your transportation. We heard from mental health. Mental health is grown exponentially. The number two reason for teenage deaths in our country are suicides from mental health. And that's our country. And I just find that to be totally unacceptable. We learned a lot about elections. There was certainly a lot about elections out there. And it's pretty well standardized that the individuals that come and talk about elections that are not, are proper or not fraud, find a common theme, whether it's from West Virginia, or Colorado, or Michigan, or wherever. They use probably the same playbook for their concerns on that. And we discuss that, and you can see that in our state legislature. There are many measures that are being put forth. So overall, it was a very enlightening conference. The other thing that I want to publicly state is that NACO has a leadership program that is all for county officials. You can have any person that is working in county government can participate in a leadership program. And our former Secretary of Defense, Powell, helped write this thing. And we've had several of our individuals here in our, our staff that have taken this program. And I'll give this to you, Sheri, to hand out to anybody that's interested, because I think it's a very worthwhile activity. For some, it's online, and you do connect with others that are participating in that particular program at that particular time. So overall, Madam Chair, I'll have some statistics for you on county government, on infrastructure, on jails, incarceration, mental health, and the whole raft of things for you to digest. But overall, it was, it's very intense, except for one caveat. The whole group was sitting there watching the Super Bowl in this thing, and they had these huge screens. And of course, the Philadelphia Eagles had their eastern component. But there's a lot of people that could have cared less, but they became Kansas City fans. And it got rather ranker, loud, and it was very boisterous. So that was a little respite in the time. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have reports today? All right, if not, we need executive session. And we're going to take action on number two, is that right? Is that what you anticipate? So first, I'd like to go into executive session under STCL 125 sub-two, subsection four. And then I think we'll come out, for those that are in the audience and may have input on that item. And then we'll handle those other two items after that. Can I get a motion to do that?
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second to go into executive session on item two of our executive session agenda. Sheri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Sheri, we call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, discussion of board action on a rental contract for the four H grounds. We're out of executive session. We had been presented, I don't know, some time ago, with that rental contract for, you want to just kind of explain what that contract, what it was for, and then what your recommendation is?
It was for the rental of the ground so that they could go ahead and work on getting their CDL license. Having some discussions with everyone out there, the current demand in use, as well as the as what is the ground is, it's going to be difficult to maintain. And so the recommendation is to deny the contract.
All right. Heard the request. Any questions for staff? Is there any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, is there a motion? Can I get a motion to either approve or deny the rental contract?
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion in favor of offering it, but I, I will be voting against it.
Okay. So, I've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No other public input, going once, twice? Okay. Sheri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Jimbin?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
All right. That motion carries. Well, it's declined, I guess. It fails. We're all in favor of not allowing that, so you'll let the applicant know, and sorry about that, sir, I was just, thank you. Need a motion to go back into executive session under S D C L one-twenty-five, two, sub-one and three.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sheri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And we're not going to take any action after this, so feel free to sit around if you want, but, all right. Motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sheri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Ehrens, a second by Schmidt. Sheri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yep.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We're adjourned.